We are full now.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We need a little wine for some story tomorrow.
I know the name Jim Cox.
Jim.
Jim Kennedy.
Jim.
Jim and Kennedy.
Uh huh.
This is Andre. He's our senior attorney.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you?
I'm Carol Lee.
Carol Lee.
I'm a senior clerk.
Bill Everett.
Oh, nice to meet you.
Her name's Carol, huh?
Carol Lee.
Carol Lee.
That's my first name.
Okay.
Can you put that small?
Do you think I stand for a comment?
No, of course not. Yeah, go ahead and uh, go there now.
One more caller.
Yes, it is. You need a minute. Turn it in. You guys are doing good. No, they should be. Yeah. Only, um, some of them will move there. Bye, this is.
What do you want?
Very good.
Also, maybe Dr. Johnson invited her to all of some of these. It was not too late.
Okay.
Litigated.
I can just get it.
I can get it.
I can.
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 One more caller.
Yes, it is. You need a minute. Turn it in. You guys are doing good. No, of course not. Yeah, go ahead and uh, go there now.
One more caller.
Yes, it is. You need a minute. Turn it in. You guys are doing good. No, of course not. Yeah, go ahead and uh, go there now.
One more caller.
Yes, it is. You need a minute. Turn it in. You guys are doing good. No, they should be. Yeah. Only, um, some of them will move there. Bye, this is.
What do you want?
Very good.
I did. Go left. You missed the question. I didn't. I just, I said no votes sit around an hour and a half of classes. I was just enjoying it.
It is five of four, March 10th, 2016. My House to Order, we spent on the city council, also in Victorville. And the city council, through the Library Board of Press, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, accessory agency to the Victorville Free Development Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Level District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. Then we have local.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilmember McEgren.
Yes.
Councilmember DeGretti.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
At this time, we will have the pleasure of agents that hopefully that are our chief of master, so please do it.
We say flag. Push your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Uh, we do have one item on the agenda, uh, staff presentation for student development programs, including the neighborhood stabilization program, NSP, and potential hometown free adaptation. And I guess I will turn it over to you.
I'll turn it over to Keith. You'll probably turn it over to Sophie. Um, I'll do any opening comments.
I'll just do a quick preamble, uh, if you will, and thank you, Mayor, and members of council for asking for this meeting, uh, that we have been working on for a few months now, and really today is in response to some early questions raised, uh, about a year ago, maybe even longer than a year ago, with respect to getting updates on our housing programs and largely questioning, uh, the appropriateness and use. So with that, the latest discussions we've had were last December where we brought to this council in this room summaries of a variety of different programs, talks largely about, um, things like NSP, um, but then shared ideas with you as to what we could do with those, uh, programs. A lot of information was discussed, so recall from that meeting, um, the council did ask for some time to be able to digest, you know, what is taken in at that meeting. Uh, so since that time, we've actually put together a presentation for you that does bring some update as to answering some of the questions that were asked in the last meeting. We are also raising a question for this, uh, council as to what it would like to do with monies, particularly, uh, NSP monies, uh, that have been generated, uh, now that we've completed the sale of all of the homes acquired under that program. Uh, and then with that, um, one of the, one of the suggested ideas from the last meeting that's actually been taken a little bit forward in this discussion is, um, perhaps suggesting the use, uh, of the funds that are available in programs such as NSP and leveraging those funds into, uh, perhaps a much more strategic, much more targeted approach. So with that, we have, uh, the staff write-up for you to answer some of those questions, uh, that were, that were asked at the last meeting, uh, and then also brings into, um, uh, question, uh, ideas we have about moving forward. Uh, so with that, you've got the staff write-up, but separate from that, we also have a staff presentation, uh, that is different from, from your written material that Sophie Smith, our director of the non-vehicle, is prepared to, to give to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. As Keith mentioned, we are going to start off by answering, um, a lot of the questions that were raised at the December 1st workshop on housing. We went through and, and listened to the workshop again to make sure that each council member's concerns, um, were answered, and we actually put the full information in the staff write-up. Um, I'll just brush through, uh, through a PowerPoint presentation for that section, just reminding, um, everyone what we discussed in December. Part of our discussion really focused on just kind of understand what is affordable housing, because everyone has a lot of different concepts of what it is. But basically, when a low to moderate income family pays approximately 30% or less of their annual income on their housing costs, a little bit higher percentage for moderate income households, that's affordable housing. It's, it's the income category of the family and how much their monthly cost of either rent or mortgage is. Um, this slide we had up in December as well, and I think it, it really illustrates where the households are in terms of their income to be in this low to moderate income category. And as we discovered back in December, you know, sometimes the results are, are not what we believe. They're actually much higher. For example, the one that's bolded there is a family of four, four that makes $65,000 a year, could be a husband, wife, two kids, um, actually fall that 100% of the area's median income. That's, that's what the area's average is. They could make up to $78,000 and still be considered a moderate income family. And so if that family purchases a home and stays, um, 30%, at 30% or below their income, then they're, they're affordable housing. They're, they're meeting the affordable housing rules. Um, the quote there from HUD that you have not seen before basically shows that, you know, families who pay more than 30% of their income for housing are considered cost burdened and may have difficulty affording necessities such as food, clothing, transportation, medical care. An estimated 12 million renter and homeowner households now pay more than 50% of their annual incomes for housing. A family with one full-time worker earning a minimum wage cannot afford the local fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment anywhere in the United States. So what that's telling us is that so much of the population is paying like 50%, one half of their annual income on their housing costs. And so the goal of affordable housing is to be able to let those families pay 30% or less so that then they can actually afford the other items, food, clothing, and everything else. Um, one of the questions raised at the workshop was really, you know, there was a question of whether or not homes in the 200,000, upward of $200,000 sales price can actually be purchased and, and, and under these affordable housing guidelines. And this example here, and we actually put, uh, three examples in the staff write-up that shows, uh, an example for a very low-income household, a low-income household, and then a moderate-income household. The one I pulled here is a low-income household, and it walks you through all the, the criteria that goes through and how things determine that. At the end of the day, a family of four that maybe has an annual salary of about $53,000 can afford a home that is with a 3.5% down payment, that's about $199,000. We have our Mortgage Assistance Program that we talked about a lot back in December, and the bullet points on the bottom show that when you couple that with our MAP assistance, maybe there isn't a house available at 199, but that's the financing that are approved for. Um, so maybe they find a house that's 210 or 220, and then they come to the city and they are a perfect applicant and perfectly eligible for the city's Mortgage Assistance Program, because with that little bit of gap financing, they can get into that 210 or $220,000 home. The typical, the median sales price in Victorville just this last month in March was 195,000. So you can find houses in that range, but there's plenty more above that as well. Um, and there are some, and usually when they're, when they're lower than that, they require, they require repairs. So this is just an example of, of, yes, there is affordable housing, um, that we do at these levels, at these sales prices. The income will, the household will have to qualify, and the house will have to qualify, but, um, these are, these are true examples. So it can be done, and it is being done. In fact, most of the NSP properties we've sold, as you know, were in this price range, and they had to sell to a low to moderate income family at an affordable housing cost. So those criteria had to be met. Are there any questions about that?
Sophie, you used the term median.
Yes.
The mean is the average, and the median is the midpoint in the full range.
Yeah.
And then there's the mode, and I don't remember what that is.
Yeah, yeah.
You said median, midpoint, but in terms of the quality of housing, is, is the median also the mean? I mean, is it?
It's not necessarily also the mean, because as you know, we might have a, a row of 200 houses at sales prices, and the middle number is...
Is the median also where the largest concentration?
Right. But, but what it is going to demonstrate is not the exact average or the mean, but it's going to be where, uh, the greater majority are going to fall.
Most frequent numbers is the mode. Mode is the most frequent in the session.
Okay. Um, another area that I wanted to clear up and add more detail to, um, from our last workshop was about the target areas. We had presented to you at that time, three different maps. One showed the CDBG areas, and actually those were the ones that were based on the 2000 census, and we have been using them because even though we had a census in 2010, it takes quite a while to roll out, um, the new information and actually get them adopted. So starting July 1, we'll be going to the 2010-based census tract. Um, and we also gave you NSP 1 and NSP 3 maps, and there were just three different ones. What we tried to improve upon in what you have there is one map that shows all of the areas and how they overlap. Um, and there's a large one, um, behind Doug here as well that's even blown up even further. I know it's dark. If it's not dark, then you can't see the screen, but, um, what the two glow-up areas show and focus on is one question that was raised, and that was specifically about green trees. And, um, what we found as we blew up the map and overlaid them is that although green tree does not, um, fall in any of the NSP 1 or 3 target areas, there is a portion of green tree, you see the blow-up there, there's a portion of green tree that's totally not eligible for any of these CDBG or, or, um, low to moderate income households, uh, programs. But there is this little area, um, out here on the east side that is. So that's going to help us as we, as we, uh, implement our program. We can see that especially within 2010, tracts that just came in, um, under CDBG, that we do have a small area that we can cover, um, in the green tree area to help address some of those lighting issues that I think are backing up to the golf course. Okay. Neighborhood stabilization program. That's kind of what led, I think, to the workshops back in December, and as Keith mentioned, um, one of the issues that we're faced with as staff is back in 2014, um, council specifically directed staff to put on hold any further acquisitions that we were doing under the NSP program. If you'll recall, in 2009, and then again in 2011, the federal government provided these grant funds in their efforts to help address, uh, high foreclosure rates that were, um, existing in cities. And the areas picked for the, um, programs were those that had the highest concentrations of foreclosures. So we took to the board and, and got approval to, to accept these grant funds and spend them, and what we did is purchased and then rehabbed and then resold houses that had been foreclosed. We did about 35 of them. Um, 35. And in, in 2014, I think the concerns that were raised were whether or not this program was, um, effective, because it's not like we were able to buy up a block at a time. You might have one home in one particular neighborhood, one on the next block, one a couple blocks away, and so kind of this scattered site basis wasn't giving that visual impact that I think we were all hoping, um, it would have. And so we were told, you know, finish what you're doing, finish the acquisitions that you're in the middle of, go through the rehab and resell them. And as Keith mentioned, we, we actually, um, sold the last one like a week ago. So we're finally done with that phase of spending, and now we have generated about one and a half million dollars of program income that, um, we need direction on and permission to move forward with, um, some kind of activity to spend those funds. Just up on the screen are just very generally the, the types of programs and types of uses that NSP can be used for. Um, anything from first-time home buyers purchasing a foreclosed home, ARR, which we did, the acquisition we had resale, land banking, just assembling some properties for, um, you know, redevelopment or other future developments, um, demolishing lighted structures, clearing buildings, and dealing with some environmental issues, um, and then just general redevelopment, acquisition of vacant land, and really partnering with a, with a developer to create new housing or new mixed-use projects, those kinds of things. So while we spent a majority of the funds that we received on the acquisition rehab and resale, there are definitely, um, a greater, there is definitely a greater range of programs and uses available to spend those funds, and, and we have some ideas for you.
Sophie?
Yes.
One of the discussions they've had in Old Town in this revitalization effort is, um, a perceived need that people have to do repairs, fix up situations on their own home. And I'm not talking about the rented one. That's a different issue with landlords. But, but they own the home and just don't have the money to replace rents, and do that to... Can any of this be used for that purpose? Does that fit anywhere?
Yes, um, and for fiscal years 16, 17, we're proposing, um, to use our, our, our annual CDBG allocation for two programs that address just what you're talking about. Um, but several...
But NSP?
Yes.
Does that work?
Yes, because, um, the redevelopment category is pretty, is pretty broad. Um, in fact, not everything that's allowable is listed on there. These are just snapshots. So yes, we can do rehab, um, owner-occupied rehab, um, quite a few other activities, but, and that's exactly what we're trying to do, take those, um, those requests and, and listen to what the residents wanted to see down there, and partner them with the right funding source and the right program.
And you use the funds also to redo heating air conditioning? Blew up, heating air conditioning? I have to fix up, clean up, blow up, heating air conditioning. Where's the living? Who is the star?
The, the two programs, and then on the next couple of slides, but the two programs that we're proposing to first launch deal with what I'm going to call the cleanup of the Old Town area, which is something we heard loud and clear from the residents down there. And it's more of a curb appeal program, meaning those, um, items such as landscaping, deteriorated fencing, maybe garage door landscaping...
Painting.
Painting of the home. Those things that really make your house look, um, that, that, that bring curb appeal to your home, kinds of things you would do if you were going to sell your home, for example. You'd have that first impression, um, that's what you'd be dealing with. So the program that we're, we are presenting or proposing would be for curb appeal. But the other one is actually called a code, um, code compliance program, and what that would do is provide a financing mechanism for low-income residents who have code violations, and whether or not that's a, um, an, you know, no heat, or no water heater, or whatever those kind of violations may be, it would provide a low, um, interest loan to help them address some of those issues.
Not a grant, a loan?
Loan. That's, so these loans that have to be paid back. Right.
Madam Mayor, if I might, um, and I want to ask about the, uh, the time lapse from 2010 census to 2016. Why so long?
So the two, the 2010 preliminary information, I remember, was released in '12 or '13. The information does not come out quickly, uh, and does not flow down to the program.
And I get that.
Yeah.
I mean, six years?
Yeah.
We still can't base our information based upon...
Yes, starting July 1, yes, and the map reflects the 2010 area.
That's a federal process.
Yes.
Not our problem.
Yes, it's federal, and then it's, and then it's rolled out to the state, and yet huge. I would anticipate...
And how do we make decisions when we can't make it for six years after the information comes out?
I would anticipate us using the 2010 information, probably through, maybe 2025.
Okay, but we'll, we won't only start using it until June of this year?
Yeah. We will start using the 2010, because they get the information and release it first, like on a, um, they, the US Census is basically releases larger portions, you know, like national data, then they start getting into state, and so it takes a long time to get down to blocks within the census tract. And at CDBG, we use blocks within the census tract. So we don't even take a whole census tract. We, it's the blocks within them where the data has to be analyzed to figure out if that population is eligible to target these programs, too.
Okay, and then the only other thing I'd like to add to that is that, uh, some of the questions that have come up here this evening deal with replacing, you know, air conditioning and heating, putting potentially solar on homes. A, a lot of that is being dealt with at San Bernardino Associated Governments.
Mm-hmm.
Sandbag has a, a program here of which will allow, you know, homeowners to, to do those type of things. So I don't know that that's a city function. It is available to, to our residents, um, as it exists now, so...
Yeah, and, uh, we're familiar with those, and we could actually provide the, our residents with information on both if we can get that from the county. Um, and it would just be a matter of which financing is best for them. Do they want to put a 20-year loan on their property taxes that might have a higher interest rate, or do they want to put, uh, use one of our programs? It, it would just kind of depend, I think, on the individual and what their plans are, the long-term plans in the house, and what the interest rates for both programs are.
You mentioned the curb appeal again, the, the fence, uh, we are, the landscaping. Is that a grant or a loan?
Loan.
It's a loan, no zone.
That's how we're proposing it. Everything that we talk about in the next couple of slides that are programmed, you're going to see very brief and general descriptions of what the programs are. We have to go through and thoroughly develop the program guidelines and bring those back to you as council in order to implement those programs. So this is just an introduction, uh, just, um, giving you some ideas of what can be done, so that you have a lot of, you know what your options are if you want to make some, um, changes or develop with some programs in Old Town, but they are nowhere at the point where all the final details, um, have been vetted, because those will need to come before you as a council.
Hey, good question. Uh, so I appreciate all that. Um, so when I hear pot of money, um, when I hear about focusing down on, uh, 7th Street, has a facility, or is there a facility readily available for a Old Town police substation, as an example? Can some of these funds be directed towards that? Because I think that would be a big priority, a cornerstone for not just that street, not the street itself, but the surrounding area. So I'm not sure if that's a, does a city-owned facility exist there? Is that, they're all private, um, on that particular street? But I don't know where that might be.
We actually had one in the transportation center for a while. Ultimately, the Sheriff's Department felt it was better for their offices to be, sort of, in a neighborhood with, uh, like, has UDT, the public data, or whatever they are, the computers that are in the police cars, became more readily available. The captain at the time wanted to see his officer sitting in a neighborhood that was potentially troubled rather than sitting in an office. So that's why we went away from it. Um, I think it's something that we can check with Sam to see, is there some benefit to having a, uh, substation, even if it's just because it's signage that's sitting right there, yeah, at the transportation center.
We used to have a substation in the mall. Is that still there?
Um, I think it's a shared substation, uh, with the security, uh, office at the mall at this point.
Well, if that works, I think it's supposed to be there for a deterrent to shoplifting. Um, and I've been reading, not so much in California, but other cities have been using the neighborhood watch programs, and they're also sharing facilities with police departments. It looks bigger, but it's, they have changed the rules where they actually, neighborhood watch wears a uniform that looks very much like a police department. Not advocating this, I'm just reporting what I'm seeing or hearing. Also, they're having those individuals qualify for concealed weapon permit, and they also carry weapons if they, or if they go and get checked out. Uh, I doubt that California will do that, the famous state that we consume a ham sandwich. But on the other hand, if it's a deterrent to have officers in an area and we have a transportation center, it looks like it would be worth looking at two things. Having a facility there, even though they're not there all the time, and whether or not neighborhood watches are effective, because I understand, and I wish somebody here in the Sheriff's Department, that they're now recommending that neighborhood watches be activated.
Uh, I can confirm that they are. Um, we have one in my neighborhood. My wife happens to be the watch.
And we have some ideas for you.
Sophie, one of the discussions they've had in Old Town in this revitalization effort is a perceived need that people have to do repairs, fix up situations on their own homes. And I'm not talking about the rented ones. That's a different issue with landlords. But they own the home and just don't have the money to replace rents. Can any of this be used for that purpose? Does that fit anywhere?
Yes, and for fiscal years 16, 17, we're proposing to use our annual CDVG allocation for two programs that address just what you're talking about.
But NSP?
Yes.
Does that work?
Yes, because the redevelopment category is pretty broad. In fact, not everything that's allowable is listed under there. These are just snapshots. So yes, we can do rehab, owner occupied rehab, quite a few other activities. But, and that's exactly what we're trying to do, take those requests and listen to what the residents wanted to see down there and partner them with the right funding source and the right program.
Can you use the funds also to redo heating air conditioning? Will it be heating air conditioning? I have to fix up, clean up, will it be heating air conditioning? Where's the living? Who is the staff?
The two programs, and then on the next couple of slides, but the two programs that we're proposing to first launch deal with what I'm going to call the cleanup of the Old Town area, which is something we heard loud and clear from the residents down there. And it's more of a curb appeal program, meaning those items such as landscaping, deteriorated fencing, maybe garage door landscaping.
Painting.
Painting of the home. Those things that really make your house look, that bring curb appeal to your home. The kinds of things you would do if you were going to sell your home, for example. You'd have that first impression, that's what you'd be dealing with. So the program that we are presenting or proposing would be for curb appeal. But the other one is actually called a code compliance program. And what that would do is provide a financing mechanism for low income residents who have code violations and whether or not that's a, you know, no heat or no water heater or whatever those kind of violations may be. It would provide a low interest loan to help them address some of those issues.
Not a grant, a loan?
Loan. So these loans have to be paid back? Right.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and I want to ask about the time lapse from 2010 census to 2016. Why so long?
So the 2010 preliminary information, I remember was released in 12 or 13. The information does not come out quickly and does not flow down to the program.
And I get that.
Yeah.
I mean, six years?
Yeah.
We still can't base our information based upon the information that you're telling.
Yes, starting July 1, yes, and the map reflects the 2010 area.
That's a federal process.
Yes.
More of a.
Yes, it's federal and then it's rolled out to the state. And yes, huge.
How do we make decisions when we can't make it for six years after the information comes out?
I would anticipate using the 2010 information, probably through maybe 2025.
Okay, but we won't only start using it until June of this year?
Yeah, we will start using the 2010, because they get the information and release it first like on a, the US Census is basically releases larger portions, you know, like national data, then they start getting into state. And so it takes a long time to get down to blocks within the census tract. And at CDVG, we use blocks within the census tract. So we don't even take a whole census tract. It's the blocks within them where the data has to be analyzed to figure out if that population is eligible to target these programs too.
Okay, and then the only other thing I'd like to add to that is that some of the questions that have come up here this evening deal with replacing, you know, air conditioning and heating, putting potentially solar on homes. A lot of that is being dealt with at San Bernardino Associated Government. Sandbag has a program here of which will allow, you know, homeowners to do those type of things. So I don't know that that's a city function. It is available to our residents as of its system.
Yeah, and we're familiar with those. And we could actually provide our residents with information on both if we can get that from the county. And it would just be a matter of which financing is best for them. Do they want to put a 20-year loan on their property taxes that might have a higher interest rate? Or do they want to put, use one of our programs? It would just kind of depend, I think, on the individual and what their plans are, the long-term plans in the house, and what the interest rates for both programs are.
You mentioned the curb appeal again, the defense, we are, the landscaping. Is that a grant or a loan?
Loan.
It's a loan, no zone.
That's how we're proposing it. Everything that we talk about in the next couple of slides that are programmed, you're going to see very brief and general descriptions of what the programs are. We have to go through and thoroughly develop the program guidelines and bring those back to you as counsel in order to implement those programs. So this is just an introduction, just giving you some ideas of what can be done so that you have a lot of, you know what your options are if you want to make some changes or develop with some programs in Old Town. But they are nowhere at the point where all the final details have been vetted because those will need to come before you as a council.
Good question. So I appreciate all that. So when I hear pot of money, when I hear about focusing down on Seventh Street, has a facility or is there a facility readily available for a Old Town police substation, as an example? Can some of these funds be directed towards that? Because I think that would be a big priority, a cornerstone for not just that street, not the street itself, but the surrounding area. So I'm not sure if that's a, does a city-owned facility exist there? Is that, they're all private on that particular street? But I don't know where that might.
We actually had one in the transportation center for a while. Ultimately, the Sheriff's Department felt it was better for their offices to be sort of in a neighborhood with, as UDT, the public data, whatever they are, the computers that are in the police cars became more readily available. The captain at the time wanted to see his officer sitting in a neighborhood that was potentially troubled rather than sitting in an office. So that's why we went away from it. I think it's something that we can check with Sam to see is there some benefit to having a substation even if it's just because it's signage that's sitting right there at the transportation center.
We used to have a substation in the mall. Is that still there?
I think it's a shared substation with the security office at the mall at this point.
Well, if that works, I think it's supposed to be there for a deterrent to shoplifting. And I've been reading, not so much in California, but other cities have been using the Neighborhood Watch programs. And they're also sharing facilities with police departments. It looks bigger, but it's, they have changed the rules where they actually, Neighborhood Watch wears a uniform that looks very much like a police uniform. I'm not advocating this, I'm just reporting what I'm seeing or hearing. Also, they're having those individuals qualify for concealed weapon permit. And they also carry weapons if they, or if they go and get checked out. I doubt that California will do that, the famous state that we can sue a ham sandwich. But on the other hand, if it's a deterrent to have officers in an area and we have a transportation center, it looks like it would be worth looking at two things. Having a facility there, even though they're not there all the time, and whether or not Neighborhood Watches are effective, because I understand, and I wish somebody here in the Sheriff's Department, that they're now recommending that Neighborhood Watches be activated.
I can confirm that they are. We have one in my neighborhood. My wife happens to be the watch captain for our Neighborhood Watch. But the Sheriff's PIL for our station is actively encouraging folks to get involved. They can provide the signs, they can provide the training, everything. In fact, I know that the Order of Realtors, not terribly long ago, had a whole presentation on that topic as well, trying to encourage Realtors as people are entering into homes and moving into new neighborhoods, if they get them involved with the Neighborhood Watch, if one exists. And if not, that they try to get one started up.
Another model I've seen in the research for what we can do in Old Town is some cities are using basically like citizens on patrol. I think in Fresno, it's called an ambassador program. So they use their citizens on patrol. They have them in an identifiable uniform. I believe they have radios that are connected to the police. But what they serve is as the eyes and ears for the police department. They're walking it around. But the reason they're called ambassadors is they're also talking to people and visitors to the area and pointing them in the right direction if they're lost or whatever. So they're greeters sort of, but they are the citizens on patrol and they're helping to staff that, the downtown areas.
Sophie, I think you provided the council, as well as Keith, with a good executive summary of what we're looking at in Old Town. I really like you to jump to some of the solutions.
Okay.
Instead of going over the history, because if there's a member of this council that doesn't understand the history of Old Town, we shouldn't be here. I think it's important that we try to figure out ways to solve the problems down there. And I think you have some good solutions. I'd like you to go.
Sure. Okay. So we'll skip the history. The basic point was to show that development pulls away from the downtown area and that started the deterioration. Reason the slide isn't here about why we vitalize is sometimes we get the question as redevelopment or economic development, why do anything? And obviously, as a city, you know, we're dealing with declining property values, dilapidated housing stock, increased climate light in deterior, in depressed areas like this. And as a city, those might want to be some issues that we address. The who will benefit, and this was also in the presentation, but basically, the point here is that we need, it's not only who will benefit, it's who needs to be involved for us to have a successful revitalization program down there. What are the stakes? Who are the stakeholders that really all need to come together? Because it's not, it can't just be, you know, what the city wants if there's no resident buy-in or no business buy-in. And so the stakeholders, you know, are the, of course, the residents and businesses, but also the property owners, the school districts that are heavily involved down there, Route 66 museum. And more recently, there has been an Old Town Coalition group formed down there. And Councilmember Kennedy and Mayor Gloria attended in January a workshop that the group held. And they're just newly getting organized and they're being funded through a grant from St. Mary's. And some of the people from the group are here today. But those are stakeholders where, and that's a group that is trying to get everyone involved. They're getting, they're going door to door, and they're trying to get everyone involved who has an interest in reviving Old Town. So with all of these players, including the city, I think that we have a much better chance of being successful instead of just one group trying to do it on its own. Just really quickly, I don't know, especially for some council members who haven't been on as long, but there were, over the last several years, some efforts to start and kick off the redevelopment of Old Town. There was actually an official redevelopment project area there that was adopted in 98. We did an Old Town Strategic Action Plan to start really looking at the area. The RDA started a huge land assembly project. And when I turn the lights on, I'll show you the map that shows how much land is owned down there, which is going to end up being a big asset for us in the redevelopment and revitalization process. We also started and worked economic development staff, planning staff, worked on an Old Town specific plan revision, and actually got the document to a pretty much final draft. But because of the downturn in the economy and the way things are going, it's been pretty much on the shelf for some time. And then, of course, in 2011, we lost the redevelopment agency project area, which results in the loss of a lot of future funding for the area. But I think now we're at the point where we're just saying, okay, in the absence of that, what do we have? What can we move forward with? It can't be the end of everything. The how is just meant to tell you, to let the council know, it has to be an effort of basically all the city departments, all the different city functions. There's programs we're going to go over, and we work closely. I work with Scott Planner, Kevin in building, Brian in engineering, and all of these city staff and all these departments will have to come together to really do a comprehensive plan in Old Town so that we're not doing like a piecemeal project.
I think I would add as a part of the how, and to try to jump into answering Councilmember McCaffrey's question of, you know, what do we do? One of the things that was highlighted on the previous screen, I think is very important to know, because it's a part of the how that I have certainly considered and asked staff to consider as it starts developing the program going forward, is to take advantage of the assets that are available to this council currently. And some of the milestones that we had up on the previous slide actually contained things that actually produce something tangible. So for example, one of the things that I think is meaningful as a part of the go-forward that's in addition to some of these specific programs that Ms. Smith is going to highlight is the specific plan that was created. We, you know, we've got a very important specific plan. We believe there was a lot of thought, a lot of effort, a lot of energy put into it. And it's sitting there literally on the shelf. It probably needs to be dusted off and maybe even updated a little bit and probably appropriately updated to include perhaps what this council decides as a result of this meeting. But I would say that's one valuable asset that's worth taking advantage of and perhaps putting to use. Another valuable asset is resulting from the Strategic Action Plan of 2005 or 2006, whenever it was, one of the things that we were directed to do resulting from that study was we actually went out and acquired an extensive amount of property, in Old Town particularly. I want to say the number is in the order of maybe $7 million worth of property. And it wasn't just scattered. It was, we actually acquired properties in targeted areas with the intent of trying to amass large assemblages of property. Because one of the biggest obstacles we did run into when we studied the area was there was too much small property throughout. And unless you wanted, if you want to do something meaningful, you had to amass large enough scale to do something meaningful down there. So I think going forward, one of the things that I would like you to consider as we do go forward is not just looking at these programs incrementally. I think these programs really have to be considered as a large part of what we've already done and take advantage of those assets that you already have, such as the specific plan, perhaps updating it and finalizing it, getting that as a more viable document, protecting land use goals down there, taking advantage of the property and perhaps directing some of these specific programs that we're considering now around trying to maximize the use of those properties that we already own.
Was most of that property we acquired commercial?
There's definitely some commercial property. If I were to characterize the general nodes of where, there's commercial property along Seventh and Forest, for example, along, I guess that would be the eastern corner to the north of the old junior high there. But behind it, when we started acquiring properties there, we acquired a number of properties that extended to the east of that, which were residential. And we actually had some visions at times of, with all of it we acquired there, because we started acquiring properties on both sides of the street where perhaps we could actually eliminate some of the right-of-way down there, some of the roadway systems, to even further make some of those properties bigger. So to answer your question, you've got some commercial down there, you've got some R1 residential down there. There was one property we acquired that was pretty big in scale that was an old mobile home park, for example. So it's a variety. And through the planning process, we can, of course, dictate a little bit better exactly how we want it to look. One of the things that I think also worth knowing before we go into some of the detailed programs is we do get interest in that area. In fact, we get approached regularly. In fact, there's a couple of interested parties that contact us on a regular basis, interested in wanting to do something down there. Something typically involves mixed use of scale, so commercial on the ground floor, maybe high-density residential going vertical. But the challenge, you know, that we've run into is the lack of tools, perhaps the lack of direction from the council and the lack of clear buy-in as to where we're headed. So I think with some of these individual programs that we're sharing with you, the funds that we've talked about, really, we'd like to try to get going down a path where we're looking at the funding sources that we have available, all these programs together, using them all together. And one of the recommendations that you do find in there is perhaps even the reconsideration of going through the new creation of a redevelopment project area, which the state did create last year, a little bit more difficult. But I guess one of the challenges that we're running into is the need for tools to properly effectuate some kind of goals down in that area.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and I know you're going to get into this, and forgive me, I was provided with a good summary, I think entire council was, and I did the proper thing and provided it to a member of the public, and now I don't have it from. But one of the things that Keith alluded to was the new redevelopment tool that we have, and that's a bill that was passed and signed by the governor. Do we know what that bill is?
Yeah, September, it's '82. It was signed in September of 2015. They created that CRIA, Community Reinvestment Area. Revitalization and Investment Area. It's like the new RDA.
I mean, I, from my perspective, I think we need to look at that. And I think we need to know what the community in that area has an interest in with respect to buying into that particular program. But ultimately, I mean, that's a tool that he talks about that we can use to help revitalize that area.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of other things that we can do through zoning and planning. You know, that's one of those things that we definitely.
Definitely. So just really quickly, Keith covered most of this. One of the takeaways we'd like to have council consider from this meeting is direction to move forward with that Old Town specific plan revision. What we found when we did the studies, market studies with the Strategic Action Plan that was in the 2007, is kind of what we already knew. Everybody knows that residential densities are needed to support commercial businesses. And when the consultants took a look at the area, they really, you know, recommended that we look at our zoning and opportunities to increase densities down there. And so the mixed-use zoning designation is included in the specific plan revision, and that's what we would want to bring in. And with that in mind, increasing densities to help actually support the businesses that would locate there. The other things I wanted to tell you just really quickly about the specific plan is it was designed and it really capitalizes on the whole Route 66 history of Old Town. Because as we were looking at all of our strengths down there, the fact that we're along the historic Route 66, and yes, we have the museum, and yes, there are signs here and there, but really embracing that history, that history that's actually there, and that is what we incorporated into this specific plan revision. So that's what you can see. There's also a portion of the plan that really deals with traffic in the area and deals with slowing down and making Seventh Street a little more pedestrian-friendly again, things like on, things like on-street parking that I believe we had before and then went away. You know, we're recommending in the plan to bring it back. Really, you want to, people to walk around and walk from business to business and face they do so. So those kinds of things are in there. So that's one of the first tools that we believe is necessary to really lay a platform for what can happen in Old Town, and then we can delve into the other program.
You know, Sophie, I think that's really worth emphasizing. Old Town has a culture and a character that is not like Green Tree, and it's not like Liberty Village, and it's not like Spring Valley Lake. It is very historical, and it's got a, it really does. All you have to do is be down there a little bit and you sense the culture that's there. And one of the things, one of the guys mentioned in that meeting was how people grew up there and then got a little more prosperous and moved out. And kind of left and moved to higher income neighborhoods, you might say. And there's a certain shame to that, you know? So somehow, I think we need to look at the strength of that community and build on that, not tear it down and try to rebuild Spring Valley Lake and Old Town.
Exactly. Embrace the rich history that's down there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The other challenge that we have, Sophie mentioned traffic, the other challenge that we have is there's a significant portion of commuters, 10,000 vehicle trips a day is what sticks in my head, that drive through there every single day, and they have no interest in stopping. They're on their way to work or they're on their way home.
Yeah.
So part of the plan is to try to reroute them to make Old Town homier and less traffic intensive.
More of a destination.
Right.
That would be the ideal thing to do, instead of just having another traffic all through there.
And from what I'm hearing, I believe we have the consensus to actually go ahead and redo or revise or complete the revision of the Old Town specific plan. So I don't hear any, anybody knows.
Great. Great. Got to see first. Just some other programs or projects or ideas that if so desired by the council, we can thoroughly research and vet and develop and bring back to your report on whether or not they would work here in our Old Town. Because no two Old Towns are the same. There's plenty of programs that we've found, and figuring out how it gets a Victor bill is what we need to do. But throughout in your packet and as well as on the screen, things like a different or special development code for the downtown area. We have found many cities that separate from the newer parts of their city actually have a different development code. And I assume it's because they're taking into account the challenges that you have when you have old buildings, but you have new ADA codes and so many upgrades that basically leaves a developer with the option of just tearing everything down. And if we want to preserve this as a downtown area, I've talked with Kevin Collins, our city's business official, a couple of times, and he says he'll look for whatever we can do still within the laws and within the building code rules, but, you know, maybe it's that we need to designate certain buildings or certain areas historic and officially designate them, and then that lets them fall under a different code. Or perhaps there's alternatives to ADA compliance that he could suggest. So it sounds like building, the building official is really willing to just look and see what we can do that makes it easier to develop down there, given the unique circumstances those buildings and those property owners are going to face. Along with that program, we can look at anything and look at impacts of whether or not DIF waivers in that particular area would be something that the council would want to consider with the theory that, of course, it was developed before. And as it is, if anyone comes into one of those buildings and does not add square footage, they're not charged a DIF fee, but the minute they start doing something different than the original footprint, then they do get those fees. So just looking at programs that encourage development and basically remove barriers to development. You know, we have to, we're asking ourselves, okay, if I'm the business or the developer that is moving to this area, what would make me want to move here versus a newer part of the city? What would be a negative? And so as a city, we can look and see how we can mitigate those negatives, if we can. Things like using the city's capital improvement program to address some of these traffic and issues along Seventh and the other areas. Possibly doing sales tax sharing or sales tax rebate programs for those vendors or those businesses that would locate along Seventh. those businesses that would locate along Seventh, acknowledging the investment that they'd be making in that particular area. And promoting infill development, because one of the big problems that the Old Town Coalition group brought up was just all the abandoned, all the vacant lots, abandoned buildings and vacant lots, vacant lots, and how they're making the whole area look. While with our own vacant lots that we have, we can promote, partner with developers and really get something going on in those vacant lots, and really bring up the look and the population there.
I don't think vacant lots were the perceived problem that abandoned buildings were.
Abandoned buildings were one, too.
I think abandoned buildings are the bane of that.
The boredom and everything. Yeah, they really didn't, don't like the way that, the image that that creates down there.
Has the city adopted an official Route sixty-six street sign for Route sixty-six through the city, and how they post it and maintain?
I've seen the historical route designations that are round.
Yeah, we've used them. I'm not aware of an official policy to use those. I know the county has their own official Route sixty-six signs that they put up on county roads.
Okay.
I'm not aware of that, no.
Okay.
Well, a big steel banner across Seventh Street down there, it's the Route sixty-six. Something big.
I think some cities have adopted a sign, I don't know if it's a national standard or it's their own cities, to try to advertise as much as possible the original Route sixty-six.
Yeah.
And of course, it's New Street and Seventh Street. The second thing, I'm assuming with all the property that the city has acquired through different entities at different times, that if someone wanted to build moderate, low-income, multifamily housing and/or commercial businesses, that we would make those available. The parking requirement, which would be a real incentive to develop, because when you start developing the parking, that land is just as expensive as the commercial or residential land that you're buying. And since we have so much land available, have we considered making that available to individuals to enhance developers' development of the property?
Yeah.
And if not, can we?
In the plan?
Next question.
In the draft plan, we definitely wanted to encourage the on-street parking, but we realized that because the cost of vertical parking structures are usually very high, that because we have so many city-owned vacant lots, that we could strategically place parking areas behind, so we'd have the commercial in front and some parking, but behind the building.
Yeah, like, if my memory is serving correctly, I believe the specific plan that's on draft actually did contemplate locations, general locations, as to where would be ideal for public parking, if you will. So I guess to answer your question, that can be certainly a part of the plan. I think it already is to some extent, but certainly could be expanded.
And those kind of public parking spot areas would then encourage foot traffic and encourage pedestrian activity.
Right.
Wandering.
Yeah, when the city put in, well, the city obtained a federal grant to widen the roadway to four lanes, that included adding some parking on the side streets, thinking that would encourage foot traffic, and it sort of didn't. Not sure, maybe we need to study that more as to why that didn't work and not repeat that. But the other thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Cox, regarding the signs, I think that's a great idea. Maybe we could think about modifying our own existing street signs along Route sixty-six to have a Route sixty-six mention on them rather than just the standard blue. The reason I think of that is because I know the county had invested in Route sixty-six, the sort of logo sign that you see on hats and banners and whatnot, throughout the county along Route sixty-six. And they had to get away from that, and that's why you see it painted, you know, six feet wide on the roadways, is because people who are fans of Route sixty-six in general were stealing those signs to put up on their garage walls. We have to be a little bit careful about creating a street sign that's so attractive that it becomes artwork for garages throughout the county.
Yeah. Just really quickly, we actually touched on the residential curb appeal that we'd like to introduce in sixteen seventeen using CDVG funds. The one we did not touch on is a similar program, but for commercial buildings. So being able to provide some kind of low-interest loan for small business owners that, you know, want to make improvements to their existing facade, especially to get, if those improvements are in line with what we're putting as far as design guidelines in the new specific plan, but just don't have the money to do that. We were hoping to develop a program like that that will help us, help them to fund and become a more uniform and distinct area. Let's see. One of the key, one of the key things that we touched on earlier, as far as any of these programs being successful in Old Town, is the perception and the reality of improved safety. One of the messages that we heard from the Old Town group down there was, you know, there was a lot of criminal activity and they just don't feel safe. And so we talked today about possibly looking into and seeing if there's a way to either have a substation, street patrol, sorry, foot patrol, bike patrol, or even use of these citizens-on-patrol kind of programs. So that's going to be really key, because the business owners, as well as the residents, as well as the patrons that are coming in that we want to attract to the area, all need to feel safe and feel like they're in a safe environment. The other safety items that we can look at is just using our code enforcement that we have, and they already function in the CDVG target area. And that code compliance load program was the one we talked about, where if you have lower-income families that want to do code improvements, that have been cited for code corrections, but they don't have the funding for, we want to give them an option to fund those improvements. And then as we start to develop and have successes and get the area cleaned up and a feeling of community and safety, we can look at what was tried a couple of years back, but maybe wasn't so successful, but bring back the special events and attractions. Route sixty-six and the museum is a huge attraction and is a huge draw, but we can also, you know, as we get activities going there, see if there's any city activities that can occur down in a revitalized area that will help increase that pedestrian traffic and activity. Finally, these are just some of, and we talked about a couple of them already, these are some of the financial resources that we can currently identify, that the city may have access to, or programs. We talked about the CRIA, Community Revitalization and Investment Authority. That's basically the RDA two-point-oh, that's the new RDA. I think that, the reason it's number one is because I do think since it's new and it's possibly something, just preliminarily looking at the criteria, that the Old Town area of Victorville would be eligible for, I think it should be one of our priorities to take a look at that. There is legislation pending right now, was just introduced in February, that actually changes the criteria to become one of these authorities. And I think it's because they're trying to make it easier, because I don't believe any communities have been able to take advantage of this yet. So we'll kind of keep an eye on that and see if we can get in on and consider that type of financing. Because then that creates the very long-term financing that you need over the years for the area. The fact that Victorville has census tracts in areas that fall under that disadvantaged community designation, it comes from SB three-seven-five and another one, I think it's five-thirty-five. But basically, because there's these campaigns and efforts to create sustainable communities, anytime you're trying to develop something that encourages pedestrian traffic, mass transit, and those kinds of things, which is what we would be doing in Old Town, it seems like it gives you an opportunity to apply for grants and such to, for that kind of funding. Another thing we can take a look at is a P-Bid. I know places, a lot of large downtown areas have them, like Old Town Pasadena, I think downtown Fresno, San Jose, and their property tax assessments that the property owners agree to, that are pulled to just keep the overall look and feel of the main corridor presentable. So just something we can look into, see if there's any interest in it, see if it would work, works other places, not sure if it would work here. And there you have listed your community development block grant funds. You get about a million dollars a year from HUD. The neighborhood stabilization program funds that I mentioned, we currently have about a million five in program income. Any other grants that we're will, that are aimed towards revitalization of Old Towns, Route sixty-six-type grants, which are out there, historic preservation grants, we would just continue to filter through and look for those. And the last thing that we have is what Keith mentioned, and I just wanted to show you a demonstration, so you know the magnet, too, is over, hopefully you can see it's bigger here, I didn't have these small ones. But what this represents is all the, it says the H2 properties, which is our old redeveloped housing area, but this, everything in yellow, just for reference, this is Forest, so we're looking north, this is Forest, this is Seventh, this is D. Everything in yellow is owned by a city entity. So what that tells you?
Owned by what?
A city entity. Some of them are the Victorville Housing Trust, some are the City of Victorville, I think some are Water, the Water Department, Water District Holdings. But what you see there is that we are a large property owner down there as well. And we have a lot of assets as a whole in real estate that can really come together with all private development and really make a difference in some of these areas. So this is, these are the real estate assets that we have, that we might be able to do something with. I think that's pretty much it. Wanted to present all those ideas. I know it's a lot, as I mentioned, each one would come back to you after thorough research and development into your program, pros and cons, all of funding if necessary, all of those, each one of these would come back to you in the form of an official adoption of a new program. But we just wanted to give you an idea of what can be done if the council directs us to. I think where we are, as the overseers of the housing grants and the NSP grants specifically, we know that we're in a different environment than when we entered into the ARR program and did all those acquisitions and rehab. But we do need help in deciding what we can do on a go-forward basis. And this is one idea, and this is one way that you could.
I have a question to Mr. Messler. You indicated that fairly often you get an inquiry from individuals about the downtown area for, what, investment, housing, commercial, buying? What's the interest?
Development, and mostly it seems to be residential, multifamily-related.
Mixed use.
Mixed use.
They had a mixed-use interest.
Mixed use, me.
Commercial down floor, or ground floor, vertical residential.
Are these, do you believe, serious inquiries, that they're really interested in moving ahead?
There's ways to do it with the right tools.
Okay. It seems like that the, one of the barriers to commercial development down there, even small-scale business, commercial development, is the perception and the view of the surrounding neighborhoods, that they just, they don't look healthy and prosperous and comfortable and, you know. And that then seems to me to fit pretty well with the findings we have from a lot of the residents, that help with rehabilitating individual homes could be really valuable. On the other hand, putting a ten-thousand-dollar, thirty-year loan on a painting project or a landscaping project, to me, seems silly. I mean, I think there's got to be a mechanism, in some cases, to do grants, and maybe some participation by that homeowner in exchange for the grant. They agree to walk a neighborhood patrol kind of, you know, whatever. I mean, all different kinds of things. But it seems to me if we're going to help on small-scale projects like that, we shouldn't burden them with loans. I just think that's going to work against what we're trying to accomplish.
Can't those loans become grants if they?
That's what I was just going to mention. What we would be presenting to council, because these two new programs we hope to roll out for July one, is if it's an owner-occupied property specifically, the goal is to have them continue to live in the home once. Ten years is just something I'm throwing out, but what you don't want to do is have the city money come in in the form of a grant, fix up a home, and then they sell it.
Yeah.
You know, and capitalize on that. And I don't think that that's what the residents want down there. The ones that have, many residents have lived down there forever, and they want to stay down there, but they don't have the funds to fix up their home. So if we're able to give them a loan and have it start to have forgiveness provisions, you know, you stay in five years, you know, half of it goes away, or so on and so forth.
Continue maintenance.
We can definitely build in incentives to have them stay, like forgiveness provisions, but still protect the city's interest in the form of a loan so that they don't turn around and sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would want to accomplish both. So that's definitely doable. And that's actually what we've been thinking of presenting to you, a couple of different options.
That seems to be the most workable.
Yeah.
Keith, I just had a quick question. The specific plan revision, you mentioned investing in, getting in front of the planning commission. Would the public have an opportunity to contribute? Okay, good. I mean, I think that's a great place to start.
Well, if you go back to your slide here, which we can't really see anymore, but...
I was going to find actual resources.
Yeah. I think number one is key, and I'd really like to see the council move in that direction. Two, obviously, taking advantage of SB three-seventy-five, if we can, we should do that. Three ought to be a method of last resort. And the only reason I say that is because I want the property owners in that area to direct that versus the city directing them to that. If they feel that that's necessary to bring that into play, then they should bring it forth to us versus us pushing it on them. But all the other things, I think, you know, come as a result after number two. But I really would like to see the council focus on number one, especially in light of what we're seeing at the state legislature and some of the changes that are going on. So that's really where I'd like to see us focus.
Thank you.
Any other questions, from the council?
Yeah, can we, is there much we can do to incentivize commercial development on Seventh Street, really realistically?
There is, and actually with some of these funds. I think that is, but unlike the redevelopment days where you could actually, there were some real specifics that you could do with redevelopment money. I think the incentives are if you waive certain fees and therefore you take away a barrier that might help them get going. If we can develop this commercial facade improvement program that could help them fund some improvements that they might not otherwise be able to fund, if you're able to, depending on what they're doing, if you're able to do some kind of sales tax rebate program. So I think that there, we do have programs that we can do that are different from the RDAs, ways of being able to fund the development a little bit more directly. But there's definitely, there's definitely ways for us to steal incentives. One of the biggest incentives is just to remove the barriers that are out there, you know, make it easy, have an easier development code if it's possible, have these programs in place, perhaps upgrade the infrastructure for certain key areas so that when a business is coming, they're not going to have to upgrade their water line, because I don't know how old they are over there, the kind of things.
That's one of the things that was brought to my attention, was that some of the property owners were trying to lease their properties that are vacant, but they have to bring it up to codes and standards, and they don't have the money.
Yeah, and that's a big disincentive to having someone locate them. So we have to look at those things, and that's where our development team, our planning team, will all come together and see what can be done, but still meet the city's goals of providing, you know, safe and legal.
Well, and I think, Sophie, I think to that point, what we want is, if development's going to occur, we want them to bring it up to code. But what we ought to be able to do is, through incentivizing them, help them pay for those costs associated with that, right? costs associated with that, right? So whatever the case may be, if they have to sprinkle the building, if they have to put any curb gutter in sidewalks, or whatever the case may be. And, you know, obviously, planning, I don't see planning here, but-
I'm here.
Scott, you're there, okay, sorry, I didn't see Chris, I was looking for Chris. But we need a, kind of a, a system in place whereby we acknowledge that we are trying to get this done in Old Town, and planning and development understands that, and they are assisting whoever is wanting to go in there to accomplish those goals. So I hope that we can synergize and bring all those people together.
Yeah, I've heard from, I can think of two chamber members off the top of my head, who are, who expressed interest in opening something in Old Town. One was a medical group, the other one was a food establishment. Both of them said, you know, there's some risk involved with doing that, especially this early on in the project, and that if we could come up with some way, it really doesn't matter exactly what way, but some way to help make it pencil better, whether that's a rent rebate, or some kind of a break on some cost here or there, or somewhere that helps them out for the first year to get established, that they would take a chance and, and start, you know, a small business down there. So one, like I said, one was a medical office, and the other one was a food establishment.
I think you and I talked about the doctor who was interested, but we weren't able to come up with anything that-
Well, we, but we can take a look at, at what options may be available. Like I said, to them it doesn't, money's money. At some point, they just need some kind of a break that incentivizes them to take that chance for a year, and they would have a break. So like the, the medical office, the concern there was that even though there's no drugs on site, unfortunately, when you have the potential for crime, there's just a recurring activity level that requires maintenance as a result, until criminals figure out that there's nothing here of any value, please stop breaking in. So they've had that happen in other areas. So if there's a way to, or, you know, for some program to help out, maybe it's not exactly attacking those dollars, but we're giving a break on something else, there, there is interest in trying to help revitalize.
Help to have better-educated criminals. We had, we had a, we have an accounting office, right? We had a break-in years ago. This guy thought we sat in there and counted money, and he was gonna, "Break in, get all the money we counted."
Anything else? If not, we will be moving on to public comment. And we do have some cards. The first one that I have is Mr. Felix Diaz.
Seriously, first of all, I want to apologize to the group. I didn't want to come to these meetings, but the older you get, the harder it is for me to walk. So anyway, I'm trying to make as many use as I can, but a couple of you pointed out the fact of the security in Old Town. And I believe when we developed the Old Town specific plan, one of the things that we were really focusing on was the police station. And that was to, to have the building there, if nothing else, to try to keep, you know, vague ransom and criminals away from that area. I don't know how well it worked, because that came about as I was leading the committee. But, and then I think one of you mentioned that had to go to dumb because of funds. A lot of things happened because of funds. And when I was in the, in the specific planning committee, we, we took two trips, few trips. One to Pasadena, to the Old Town in Pasadena. We got some ideas from them. We went to Lancaster and got some ideas from them. And one of you also mentioned that, you know, before we have even housing, and again, this is my own personal feeling on this, before we can have housing, I think we need to have something that will attract, that will attract people. And the area that is over there with the old, some of you will probably remember the Security Pacific Building, McMahon's Furniture Store, that is now totally vacant, I don't remember who it was, but brought up the idea of possibly doing what Lancaster did, building a community performing arts center. That was a pretty good idea at that time, and, and I think we had the money, but things kind of faded away. But that was one, one good idea, and, and that, that lot is still completely empty. If you, if you were to go to Lancaster today, on Sierra Boulevard, I believe it is, they have this beautiful performing arts center. And it is expensive, I realize that, it's expensive. So that would be one way of attracting people. Another, another way that, that, and also, that empty building is right next to, or that empty lot rather, is right next to the library. Very, very concerned and surprised that the Victor Valley High School District, is there anyone here from the Victor Valley High School District that's, that's representing Victor Valley High School District or Victor Elementary District? Because they should be here and then give some ideas. Because the old, which used to be the old Victor Valley High School, Junior High School, falling apart, and it would fall apart. And if it wasn't for the City of Victorville's Park and Recreation, Victor Elementary, Sixth Street Prep wouldn't even be open today. That's gonna go down. And, and these, these kids that attend, that attend these schools, or that attend these schools, they need security. They need to feel secure. People that, that have property down there, that was one of the main, the main concerns that people had even back then. I don't remember if it was 92, 94, sometime in that, in that area. And if any of you remember Jeff Goodwill on, on Sixth Street, and this was told to us, I don't know how true it is, but it was told to us that when he was a mayor, he suggested that the building, the buildings from Sixth Street down to Seventh on D, that all those buildings be knocked down. Some of them had burned, the Stewart Hotel, I believe, or the Smith Hotel, the Pioneer Hotel. And at that time, it was mentioned that, that they were saving the facades of the Pioneer Hotel of all those buildings, just the facades. And they were going to build behind other buildings that resembled that. And that's when we came up with the Old Town motif, of painting it a certain color, and et cetera, and so on, making it very Western or very early California. And that, that went good for a couple of years, like I said, till the money dried up. But there are several ideas that, that we had back then, that I don't know if, if any money is available, but there's a lot of things that could be done, and I believe, I don't know. I, I believe that the, that the county, the city, and the state, maybe even the federal, could go in partnership with building, buildings, doing something, because people are not going to, are not going to build houses down there if there's nothing there for them that will attract them. Another idea that we had back then, and that's the reason why we closed down the, the parking, was because we had the idea that maybe, because there's a lot of empty lots behind, behind businesses on Seventh Street, both sides. And we had the idea that this would make this into a walking community like they have in Pasadena, where it would be, both sides of the street would have outdoor cafes, coffee shops, restaurants, and where people could just, just walk, no cars. The cars could be parked in the back of these buildings. And this would be just a walking facility from, facility rather, from A Street to C Street. And of course, traffic would have to be redirected, and Highway 66 would have to make a, you know, would have to make a detour, and so on. So that's a lot of things that, that we thought about back then. I think, I think Old Town, we call it Old Town, has a lot of, has a lot of promise. And, and, you know, I, I'd like to see that Old Town come back up, one way or the other. If Victor Valley High School District would move their district offices to the old school, and that would attract people, that would attract attention. If the, the Old Town, Seventh Street would maybe get the idea of, of building those, those outdoor cafes and things like that for walking purposes only, and change those empty lots, make them into parking areas, that's, that's another idea that could be developed. Because I, I love this town. I love Victorville like you can't believe, and I, and I hate to see it completely. So anyway, thank you for listening, and-
Thank you very much, we appreciate all that information. The next one is, how would I pronounce that?
Siro Libanati.
Oh, Father, I'm sorry, forgive me.
Siro Libanati, actually, that's right.
Say that again?
Siro Libanati.
And I knew that-
English will be Cyrus, that's a Spanish pronunciation. Italian name, actually, Libanati's Italian.
Like I said, I apologize, I think you're not-
Okay, understand. We come here more as a, as a pastor of St. John Church, probably where we are there. We've been there for a long time, probably the longest time. And I think it's like a, a good marriage, in good times and in bad times, we've been there. I'm not sure if now is bad times or good times. It is, it is the times that, that we are living in. I've been, and I live there, actually. Sometimes in our church, pastors leave to, choose to live outside of the, of the area, and then they come and I work. I, I live there. And actually, I'm gonna give an example of what I see in downtown, and it happens, and I don't think people realize what, sometimes what, what happens, because I live there. This last Friday, a lady was dropped out at my church by her daughter, apparently. I don't know the, the whole story, but apparently her daughter dropped her off. And basically, dropped her off, that's it. You were, I disowned her as, as my mom or... And then, of course, she ends up sleeping in the church, because I thought the daughter was gonna, I should pick her, pick her back up. She didn't. Next day, a good parishioner took her in, in her home. And on Sunday, which is very eastern, she was still around. So I said, you know, I wanna, I'm gonna have to call the police on this one, you need help. She's having qualifiers and elderly, because she's 62. So I called the dispatch, and they said, "Well, let us send somebody to check her out and see what we can do." The police officer that shows up doesn't speak Spanish, although I suggested that somebody who speaks Spanish come. And the first thing she, she does is call the paramedics. So I have the fire truck coming in the middle of the eastern service. The, the units in, in the back, nobody needs for that, and I mention this because I see a lot of waste of, of resources, just because of fear of liabilities. Then, of course, she ends up staying there, nothing is, is done. And, and I was given a suggestion by the police officer, that I told her it's not gonna work. She told me yes it's gonna work, because it didn't work. I find myself telling the police officers what, what to do, or teaching them how to do the job better. And I'm not saying this in a condescending way, hopefully I don't sound condescending, I'm just telling you about, again, the waste of resources. And sometimes I think we, we try to fix things with money, and, and money is not gonna fix a lot, a lot of issues here, because this was an issue probably of, of mental illness. I took her to the emergency at the hospital. I was told not to take her to Victor Valley Hospital, which would be the choice, because it's four blocks away from the church. I says, "Well, I don't think that they're gonna do much for her." The police officer told me, "Take her to Desert, Desert Valley." And to make that long story short, I'm there until 2:00 in the morning. And, and then the doctor says, "Well, she's gonna be assessed next, next day," and hopefully something happens. Again, I see a lot of lack of communication among the, the resources available to people. And I, I think I'm with you, that the solutions have to come from the community, but sometimes the community, I don't think that they're listened, and not to blame anybody, the community sometimes is not well-educated, they need to have precise instructions. I have offered my church, you know, for community events, and I, I'm not sure the presence of the, of the people who have some, you know, something to, to, to say, who are making decisions, that they are present in the most helpful way, like the, like the police, and maybe city council members, and I'm glad that, that you're here today to address these issues. But the, the issue of mental illness, outreach to the community, information given to, to the people who live there, neighbors, simple things that can be done that don't need money, because if we're gonna waste, if we're gonna wait six more years, what are we gonna do during the six, six years? And I think a lot of potential to do things to beautify, even to beautify the place, to involve the churches in, in helping beautify the place. Nobody has ever approached me and say, "Do you have a good, that could clean a, you know, a brick and mortar?" It doesn't take a lot of money to do that, I think it takes just shovel and the boom, and then good, goodwill, and a little bit of a, you know, maybe a trash bag. So, and I wanna sound, you know, positive, but, but again, I think we, we look at solutions in terms of investing money, and, and then we lose the, the big picture. This lady that was dropped off is a, is a citizen of the United States, not a Navy, Navy of the United States, but a citizen of the United States, doesn't speak much English. The bigger picture of homelessness, mental, mental illness, I don't know if we are looking into that, if we're listening from the families and from the, the people who are suffering in the, in the area. I'm gonna be there for four years, not because of choice, but because of what I, I was assigned there for two terms of six years. I'm willing to help. Again, I've opened the church for many activities, you know, AA meetings, NA meetings. Of course, you know, we, we host the Law Stable, which is a feeding program for, not just the homeless, but anybody who needs a place to, to have a meal. So, and you're welcome to visit our place without hospitality. On Sunday, I have invited my own parishioners to be part of that, and hopefully not to come to church and pray, which is maybe a misconception about the Catholic Church. We just don't pray. Hopefully, we become involved, and we make a difference in a neighborhood. We have a lot to learn from that, but maybe your presence or challenging the police and all the resources of the city to be more present in a positive way than not just when there's a crisis, that I think would make a big difference, especially because we are there. We are not planning to leave unless, of course, I'm not the boss there, the bishop, my bishop is the boss, and maybe somebody knows something that I don't know, but I don't think that the Catholic Church is planning to leave the area. So hopefully, we can work more together and, yes, bring back the Old Town to be a place where beauty shines, you know, shines forth, and families, you know, live good lives. And, yes, we have development, but to me, it's about healthy neighborhoods, families living well, and people living meaningful and healthy lives. So, thank you again. I think I will know in about three minutes, but...
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I will have to emphasize that I will watch the three-minute time limit. Thank you. Stephanie Zerin.
Hi. Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Stephanie Zerin. I'm the community organizer with local IPS in Old Town Victorville. As many of you know, we were recently invited and awarded by the St. Mary's Hospital to apply for a community building initiative grant to the St. Joseph's Foundation. The goal of this initiative was to develop resident-based capacity and implement positive change in Old Town Victorville. In order to achieve this goal, we've now composed a core team of 20 community members that are made up of residents, volunteers, and the business community. During the last six months, we've engaged close to 200 residents through our one-on-one interviews, resident engagement surveys, and two of our community forums. Key areas of interest that the community has expressed are nuisance behavior and illegal activities of people that are currently experiencing homelessness, crime and drug sales, the use of drugs, as you guys mentioned, abandoned buildings, and vacant lots. Given this information, it seems like really good timing for the city now to look at the resources that we currently have and leverage some of the programs listed in the presentation given by their staff today, so that we can really create a holistic approach to the problems we've seen in Old Town Victorville. I want to thank you all for giving us this opportunity and really opening the door to have this conversation of Old Town Victorville. And I really look forward to the work that we as a community can do, and again, like Father Cyrus said, leverage the resources that we have and have the most positive impact for the residents of Old Town Victorville. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next is Rosie Alveda.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Rosie, and I continue as a long life and breathes of Old Town Victorville. I want to thank you for having this meeting and speaking specifically about Old Town. I came to you during the city strategic action meeting back in January, and I asked that you make Old Town Victorville a priority or region for the city. For many years, Old Town Victorville has been a victim of declining economy. We see problems of vandalism, abandoned buildings, people that are homeless, drug sales and drug use. We see extreme levels of child obesity and high levels of poverty in each of the families, but also we see hope. We see power, and we see courage. We see the community members, residents, service providers, and the business community coming together and working towards a change. Look around here. We have the assistant and the support of St. Mary's Hospital, the Victor Valley Rescue Mission, Father Ciro with St. John's Church, he's also here present. We have members of the Lord's Table, and we have families that were born here and raised, and that are now raising their own children here, who are stepping up and looking towards that change. This community is not looking for pity, oh, pardon. This community is looking for real solutions, and we're willing to work hard to achieve them. This is why we want to thank you for tonight and for the opportunity to bring about positive change. And also, we invite you to continue to hear what many residents, business owners, and community members have to say about Old Town. And that's why we invite you to the community forum on Thursday, April 21st at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Powers.
Well, good evening, council members. Been a while since I've seen you. I'm Barbara Powers, and I've been volunteering in Old Town for over five years. Old Town Seventh Street, from Forest to D, currently has 23 activity, active businesses. People don't know that. 23 active businesses. I'm talking about just from Forest to D Street. And this includes three restaurants, and Jennifer's here tonight. She has the large restaurant in Old Town, Caribbean Food and Bake Buns. The museum on D Street in 2014 posted 10,000 Route 66 visitors, and it's doubled to 24,000 in 2015. That's Route 66 people. Some are LA, some are, we see them, some are LA, some are locals, and there's quite a multitude, but the majority are visitors that are international, live all over the world. So the visitors are an important asset to Old Town. The sewer construction on C and Seventh, as you know, is not completed, which means there's, the traffic is now in an unsafe mode, going very fast. Every day, we see close calls for pedestrians where drivers are speeding to make the next green light. My suggestion on where there is no stoplight, on A and C crossing, is that there be a stop sign put on both those streets. Something's got to be done. Either speed control of some kind or stop signs. It's just too unsafe for the crosswalks. Safety is listed in the planning commission as their priority, safety for Victorville. The strategic planning group has been very thorough. I go to their meetings, and it's collecting Old Town data, which will be very beneficial for you guys. The Old Town Improvement, I understand, the Victorville City has been very successful in finding grants of funds. There are two nonprofits, not including the nonprofit, which, I'm sure they have their own grants going, but these are two nonprofits that could use help getting grants. And one is the Historic Victorville Route 66 Information Center. The other one is a set-free store. They're both on Seventh Street. And I'm sure they'd appreciate any kind of grants, a person, or information on how to improve their locations. My question for the council today is, have you, one of them is, have you discussed the idea of making Old Town a historic location? And one of the fellows that has the factory out of SCLA, he, I'm trying to think of his name, he suggested that, where we make, to build a historic location. The other idea is to include our Regional Route 66 Board for Grant Funds. They will match funds on restoration of the Route 66 buildings. And I don't know if this is what... Well, I met, we met with Sophie today, which was a real pleasure, and I support her forward-thinking of Old Town. I really think it's so very, I hope you all support her and what they're doing, because between Stephanie and this group, it's going to be good. So please support them, do whatever you can.
Thank you. Bill Edwards.
Hi, guys. Phil Edwards, Royal Rescue Mission. Thank you for being here tonight and listening to all of us. We, I, the downtown Victorville area is, I remember it as a kid, right? My dad got, wrecked his first Corvette on the corner of Seventh and D, a daily patrol truck hit him. That was, he had six of them that he wrecked, but, long story. Right? So, my uncles used to throw water balloons on the cars off of the old Edison Building, right? I have deep roots here, and so it's meaningful to sit in this meeting and listen to the folks talk about it. And I'm very encouraged by the presentation. Keith and Sophie, just thank you. You know, we are a organization downtown that is obviously dealing with a problem that has been there for a very long time, the homeless, right? Those who are experiencing homelessness, maybe those who are just low-income and are struggling. And so, I love the plan, I love what you guys have presented, but I would really like to encourage you guys to draw more of us into that conversation on how we're going to solve or help solve that problem. You know, I currently have three employees and many more graduates from our program that were on the streets of Victorville at one time, and now are productive members of society, going back into those that need help. And so, literally, we've taken them from the front row of Seventh Street to a lifestyle of giving back to those that really need it. And so, again, I want to encourage you guys to help us, you know, allow us to be part of that conversation and helping them. You know, we as an agency are looking at property, and we would love to be in the area where they're at, because they're there. They're not going anywhere, right? You can move them, like we moved them out of the riverbed, but now, many of them are in that downtown area, and many of them are what we call midtown, so they're behind the old, was it the Leventz furniture? They're like where the entrance to the fairgrounds is. Anyway, the old, yeah. And then, they're also in the alley. I mean, I drove back there the other day, I counted 25, just, and I'm driving at 10 miles an hour, right? I mean, they're there. And so, with more support from the agencies, from Ciro, folks like us, I believe in the revitalization, we can, we can help that problem, because they're there, right? And so, that's my encouragement for you guys, just to allow us to be a part of the conversation that would ultimately help this part of the planning process and be a part, be a solution for you guys. You know, we have, as an agency, an organization, I have models in San Fernando Valley, in Ventura County, that are very productive, very, do a lot of good for their communities. I took the Hope team down there. Hope team was just, couldn't believe what they were looking at. They said, this is amazing, and you can do this in Victorville. Yes, I have the means to do this in Victorville. And so, I would, you know, again, love to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, Maggie.
Hello, Flipp Nagy. I was born here and grew up here. I've been an educator since 1998. And a few years ago, I was challenged to start a Victorville Facebook page, which is now, also I called it, you know here from Victorville, and it's stories and photos, there's over 6,000 people that are now members of the page. And I got to thinking, I grew up in downtown Victorville, I was employed there as a teenager, and my mother managed Montgomery Ward's, and we had the first drive-in restaurant on Seventh Street, which was Sparkies, and right at the entrance of the fairgrounds. So, I had, been working on an idea the last couple of years and doing some research of starting an interactive, exploring, discovering, hands-on, engaging, learning, children's museum. And all the children's museums in Pasol Rosas and Los Angeles Abismo in the downtown areas, and also Pretend City, a lot of the children museums, and researching and talking to them, they said, one of the things you want to do is incorporate the history of your town, and that would be downtown Victorville. And that's like the hub and where it started. Incorporate that in your architecture, in your design of your museum. So, I'm proposing anywhere from 40 to 50 different venues where children from six months old to 16 years old would come in. It's hands-on, it's interactive, it's engaging. And I would expect conservatively, anywhere from 4,000 to 5,000 children and families a month coming in, visiting the museum. And I think it could be incredible, just a jumpstart to Old Town Victorville, because after they go to the museum, they're hungry, they want pizza, they want yogurt, they want their Starbucks, and, you know, I could see it just developing. I have the support of Robert Lovinggood's office and High Desert Community Foundation, and working, again, with Stephanie, and just have a real passion and a vision to see this children's museum go. I'm working on finding venue and place. So I'm also working with the fairgrounds. They said, oh, we'd love to see something at the fairgrounds, and so I'm just trying to find a spot. And I'm getting sponsors to sponsor the venues. For instance, Midtown or Midway Appliance generously said, hey, if you have a building, we'll put a kid-sized kitchen in it with all the, everything, appliances, the counters, the cabinets, and, you know, we'd like to be able to do that. And, you know, he had a miniature office for medical and a dentist's office, and there's just all these things that kids can do. I have a whole presentation on it, I could send later, but I just wanted to open the dialogue of, yes, I would be interested in, I grew up here and I love downtown, I'd like to see it, just be restored to what it used to be and even better. So that's my passion, that's my heart. And in thinking about Victorville, listening to Stephanie from the Institute for Public Strategies, you know, I looked at, identified the problems that they were saying that really blighted the town down there, and said, you know, there's a lot of fear, a lot of people fear going down there. I hear it all the time. I said, and my personal, my personal passion is you overcome fear with hope. And if you establish hope, once again, people start gravitating toward it, they feel safe again. And that's what we need to do. If you get 4,000 to 5,000 kids, I'm working with Rick Piercy and Renee Delacruz also, and we said, if you get that many kids, you're going to have to draw some support from the police. And you have to make the children feel safe, and the families feel safe, and have a place where they can come and enjoy themselves and learn and discover and engage in their education. So that's my proposal, and I just want to open that door to, let's talk some more.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dominic Molina.
I'm the city council. My name is Dominic Molina, and I am a resident of Old Town Victorville. I am here today to speak on behalf of Old Town Victorville. I am excited about all the plans that we are expecting for the near future of Old Town. I wanted to read something from the City of Victorville letter of restoring points of interest in Victorville. It says, in 1988, the Victorville City Council established the Historic Historic Committee for the purpose of making recommendations to the city council to elaborate, declare, preserve, and maintain historical sites and points of interest. Since then, the number of historical sites have been identified. All of these places have left their mark on Victorville, even though the buildings and land uses have changed over the years, and landmarks are still significant, vital, and show distinct eras of growth, and most are located in Old Town. Just like all of these historical points of interest, Old Town Victorville should be recognized for its... recognized for its valid history and the impact it's made on today's, on today's Victorville. Old Town deserves our attention. We need to show Old Town how special it is, and we have a community need to come together and make Old Town beautiful again." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Merritt.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Merritt. I own actually two properties in Old Town Victorville. I'll say, we're planning with concern, they were wonderful in helping us open a business. My problem here is, I think the law goes on that you guys aren't aware of, we opened a small building, and it was next to the Barber College. The Barber College was full of homeless people.
The lady that follows them, speaking to us directly about how we don't know what's going on down there. Makes me think that perhaps we ought to have a group that's more focused on what's going on down there. You know, as a city council, it's very difficult for us to focus on everything that goes on in the city. And so, you know, one of the reasons we have a planning convention, one of the reasons we have a legislative review committee, and youth advisory committee, and we have public input from those various committees is because we need those folks to provide us with input on what's going on in various areas of our city. So as this plan moves forward and comes back to the council, I would highly suggest that this council consider having an advisory group of some sort that would be related to Old Town and its revitalization.
Well, they do have their meetings, and Councilman Kennedy and I attended one, and it's not that I'm not acquainted with the Old Town. I grew up here. I was born and raised here. I've been here longer than any of you. But anyhow, it was very informative, and I was very proud to see that all these issues that were brought up, these people are aware of, we're aware of, most of it, but of course, we're not directly involved with it. But we do need to get more focused on it and attending these meetings and looking into what we can do to assist them possibly with their ideas and then get some grants and whatever we need to do to help.
Quick question. Go ahead, go ahead. Answer. Thanks. So just for a way ahead, specific plan revision will be started up again? Is that what we're?
Yes.
Okay, good. Number one. But number two, whenever you develop a particular city, there's definitely things you want to do to make everything integrated, where you put high-density housing, where you put commercial businesses, where you put residential, et cetera, et cetera. Has a market feasibility study been done on this particular area at all as part of this, or?
There was one done some time ago.
There was one done with the strategic action plan, and there was one done...
Kaiser Marsden did one.
In the draft plan.
It's been a while, but there was, there were studies done that determined feasibility.
And the reason is, obviously, as a landholder, as the city is a landholder down there, you can either start with that and sort of program that and phasing this project, I mean, this is a huge project, or if you're going to wait for the private sector to do it, they have their own intentions, and compatible use down there is a big issue when you have the garage down there in the corner, you've got gas stations, and then you've got various facilities that would be ideal or not, and then zoning, whatever, whatever. But certainly, I believe, everybody on this council is very supportive of this idea. We want to make sure that we have the tools necessary, all the different things that are available to the city, and move forward. So I'm just looking forward to get going so that we're not stuck, because we can go around and around, but I just want to make sure that we're focusing on what we have, what tools we do have.
Yes, our takeaway is there's definitely some near-term goals that we can accomplish, and that's retooling some of what we have using the NSP funds. That's something that's got to be handled right away, but I think our goal for having this discussion was not wanting to retool something like an NSP fund and spending in an Old Town when there isn't a larger plan in place. So there's some near-term goals we're going to roll into, dusting off the specific plan, and then also looking at exploring probably some of the longer-term goals, which is the redevelopment 2.0 type thing. But we'll make it a little bit more concise so that you can kind of see the game plan, and as we bring the respective individual programs forward that fall into the larger, we'll also be bringing those back to council for a third one.
A couple of things. One of the things Father said is that every problem that's down there isn't necessarily going to be solved with money. I'd like to find the money that's available, that we can commit and use it wisely, but I think we also have to be open to all the other possibilities that may not involve spending money. The other thing that I've heard from a couple of people is, we have to resist the temptation of sitting in City Hall and deciding what's best for Old Town. I think we have to be involved with the people who live and work there and understand how they see their issues. And I think we need to be more present. I'm not, I'm not sure an advisory group is what we need. I think we all, if we all spend as much time in Old Town as we spend out on Restaurant Row, you know, we'd probably have a lot better connection. I think there are some things we need to think about.
One of the other things I know is really needed is a cleanup of the area. I mean, there's vacant lots with sofas, mattresses, I mean, you know, just all kinds of stuff all over the place. Jim and I did a complete tour of every single street. We actually inventoried everything that we saw, you know, so that we would know. I was surprised to see how much there is out there that needs to be cleaned up. You get so hung up on just traveling certain streets or roads, and you don't see the others, you know? But we made it a point to spend, I have a day just going around and looking, and we know that we need to do something, and we need to do it immediately. I mean, it's not something that can wait three, four years from now. It needs to be done now.
We do have a community cleanup coming up in about a week and a half. If there's any groups out there that are interested in participating in that, there'll be, you know, free dump services available. You can select, you know, the lot or the series of lots of your choice. Just give, everyone's steps gone for the night. Give a call in the morning to City Hall and let them know that you're interested in Community Cleanup Day. I believe it's on Saturday, April 9th. Yeah, April 9th. Thank you. So there's still time to get involved with that as well.
As well as letting us know where there are issues that need to be taken care of that we might not know about, but you know about, let us know.
I see I gave the information today regarding Jennifer. I don't know if she made contact with her regarding, you know, scheduling cleanups.
Right.
So I put them in contact with one another. I thought it would be better than me trying to relay all this information.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I'd also like to ask that we address the lady's concern, the restaurant owner who expressed some real dissatisfaction with code enforcement. There are always two sides to every story, we all know that, but I think every story needs to be heard and needed.
Our code enforcement official is here tonight. I know he heard, and I don't even have to tell him. I'm quite confident that he'll be researching that starting tomorrow.
We take great pride in our code enforcement group, and we don't like to hear criticism. We'll listen to it, though. We want to hear it. We don't like to hear it, but we want to hear it.
Yeah, we've actually implemented through the planning department some changes to help with small businesses when they come to the counter that has probably occurred after this business opened. So we're hearing loud and clear that we're on the right track with that.
Anything else? Well, thank you, everyone. I believe this was very productive, and we will continue having our meetings, and we will make it a point to attend. I believe I am going to be at a town on the next one, which is on the 17th, no, what is it? The 18th?
21st.
21st. I have flyers. If anybody would like a flyer.
Please leave.
20 flyers. Okay.
I may be at a town or coming back. I think we can...
We should be back early morning on the 21st.
That's okay. Take a nap.
We're going to be on the East Coast on the 21st, so I, there's no way out.
This meeting is...